Hello, thank you for tuning in to this live candidates debate at Belmont Media Center. Between the candidates for the school committee race, there are three candidates running for two, three-year seats. That makes it a race. And I'm Joanna Jubelis, Senior Multimedia Journalist for Wicked Local Belmont and the Belmont Citizen Herald. I'll be co-moderating tonight's live debate with Roger Colton. Roger is host of Community Conversations, a podcast produced here at Belmont Media Center, as well as co-host of the weekly news program Belmont Journal, which is also produced here at Belmont Media Center. Thanks for being my co-moderator, Roger.
Thank you, Joanna. And Joanna, can I add just, we're going to be here for another couple hours. So there is a live audience. So if you want to come over to the Belmont Media Center, please do.
Yes, everyone should come to 9 Lexington Street. Why not? It's Friday night! This is a party! Really! I'm very happy to be here. And the election that this is for, the town election, is April 2nd. So it's very important that you get to know the candidates before you get out and vote on April 2nd. And the candidates I'm going to introduce right now, and then they're going to be doing opening statements to help you get to know each of them a little bit. But first, I'll introduce them. I have Peter Pantazopoulos to my left. He's a newcomer. Welcome, Peter. Andrea Presswich, she's an incumbent. She's already served three years on the school committee, and she's running again. We have Amy Chekaway. She's also a newcomer. Welcome, Amy. And Roger, before we get into the opening statements, if you can just briefly explain to everybody what a school committee member is, what they do.
And I have some insight into that. My wife used to be a member of the Belmont School Committee. The Belmont School Committee is an unpaid six-member board elected to three-year terms at Belmont's town elections. The school committee is the policy-setting board or body for the Belmont Public Schools. Its primary activities include appointing Belmont's school superintendent, along with approving the annual school budget, and negotiating labor agreements with the various unions, both the teachers' union and the non-teaching unions. While town meeting appropriates the annual budget to the schools each year, it is the school committee that has the exclusive authority to determine how the dollars are spent amongst the Belmont Public Schools and within the Belmont Public School budget.
Thank you, Roger. Now it's time for the opening statements. Each candidate will tell you a little bit about themselves. We have a timekeeper, so if you go over the limited amount of time, you will hear a bell, and that basically means wrap it up because you're out of time. So we'll start with Amy Chekaway.
Well, thank you. I'd like to thank the Belmont Media Center for hosting this event, and Roger, you and Joanna for helping to facilitate it. I think it's really important that folks in town get to learn more about everybody's perspectives. So, my name is Amy Chekaway. I am running for school committee because I care deeply about public education, and because I feel like I can contribute right away to this role in our special community during a very important time. I have four priorities I'd like to quickly highlight, if elected, that I would like to focus on. First, and always keeping in the center, is to make sure that we provide every student, including those with different learning styles, abilities, backgrounds, with an excellent and comprehensive education. Second, making sure we continue to support our excellent educators and keep making progress in the district's plan to employ a sufficient number of educators, as well as outside of the classroom staff, to help educate and support our children. Third, it's really important, especially during this time of great change and transition, that our school committee be a strong leader in our community, be present in lots of different forums, and be talking to a range of perspectives as we embark on building the new grade seven-to-12 school, which is going to involve a huge amount of work and focus and management. And fourth, as mentioned, an important role of the school committee is to really evaluate how best to spend our constrained resources, and also planning for the future in terms of our district's priorities. I think we have some difficult budget choices to make, and revenue can't keep up with our growing expenses. I hope to be a really strong advocate for our schools and for our education, really focused on making sure we maintain high-quality teaching and learning environments for all of our students. So, in closing, as a parent, as an involved volunteer, and as an education policy expert, I feel like I have a lot to offer to the school committee, and I'm ready to jump in and help.
Thank you, Amy. Andrea?
So, you know, what she said is good. Thank you. So, when I ran for school committee first round three years ago, I had two major priorities: to deal with the spiraling enrollment and start times, high school and middle school start times. I'm sure everybody's aware that the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Center for Disease Control have policies that middle school and high schools should start no earlier than 8:30 a.m. So I'm really pleased that progress has been made on both these issues. The town has purchased modulars. In the elementary schools, the class sizes have come down the past three years. And then, of course, we had the approval of the new seven-through-12 high school, which will, should solve our enrollment, our space crunch issues for the foreseeable future. And I'm very pleased that next fall, classes at the high school will start at 8:05. So we've made a nice step, a first step, in the right direction of healthy start times. I'm running for reelection because I feel like there's unfinished business. First of all, the new high school does need careful oversight. And when students first go into that absolutely lovely building, I want them to do so at a healthy time. Most importantly, I'm running because I want to preserve funding for Belmont schools. We're going into some lean times, and I passionately believe that Belmont schools are funded. We cannot cut the funding per student to Belmont schools. Okay? Funding is at a rock bottom. I know that every single dollar, or more or less every single dollar we get for the schools, comes from Belmont taxpayer. But we cannot let that funding slip. Otherwise, we will, you know, Belmont will not be excellent anymore. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Peter?
I want to take the time to thank the Belmont Media Center and Roger and Joanna for having me here and giving me this opportunity to speak. With that said, to give you a little bit of my background, I've lived in Belmont for 19 years with my wife Olga and my two sons Elias, who is five, and Evan, who is one. The reason I'm running for school committee is because as they're entering the Belmont school system, and they're going to be in it for a long time, I've been meeting with a lot of parents and listening to their school issues, and I've also experienced some of the school issues that have been talked about on this board here today. And as I've been listening to them, I've been spending more time at the school committee meetings and listening and getting more inquisitive as to, you know, how they're going to be addressed. And that's where I've made the decision, based on my professional background and education background, that I can help solve a lot of these issues. I'll give you a little bit about my educational background. I have a bachelor's degree in business finance. I have a master's, executive master's degree in finance, and also have a master's degree in information technology. I have over 20 years of professional experience consulting, and I consult installing financial systems. I've been an analyst all the way up to now a global portfolio manager, where I manage a diverse group of Indian and U.S.-based employees. So what does that do to correlate with the school committee? I understand budgeting. And budgeting is to understand, not just from a line item standpoint, but you have to understand how to budget with planning. We're going to be building a $295 million high school and a $100 million hockey rink. Someone's going to have to understand regulatory compliance, they're going to have to understand capital expenditure, they're going to have to understand operating budget, and how that goes in line with the school policies, how that goes in line with what's mandated coming from the state, and doing the right thing. That's the most important thing, is what's the right thing for the children, what's the right thing for the parents, and what's the right thing for the taxpayers? And that's something maybe the school committee board does not have today, and I'm going to be coming on to it with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, we're going to ask each of you questions. You'll have one minute to answer, and then if one of you wishes to rebut what the other says, you'll also have one minute. Our timekeeper is Roger's daughter, Allison Colton. Again, listen for the bell, and thank you, Allison, for volunteering your time tonight. Roger is going to start with the questions, and I think we're just going to go down the line, starting with Amy.
So do we wait until everybody's answered before we do rebuttal if we want to?
Do we rebuttal, or do we?
I think that's the only way it works.
Yeah.
Just till I...
Yes. Okay. The Belmont Public Schools, for the last few years, have devoted more and more attention to improving the social-emotional well-being of students at all the grade levels. What is your opinion about the role of the school system in addressing social-emotional well-being, and how do you balance an effort to increase a focus on improving social-emotional well-being with budget constraints?
And I'm first, right?
You're first.
Okay. So, as a researcher who has actually looked at this issue specifically, I think it's important to know that social-emotional development is of critical importance, and I would strongly support, I support the investments that have already been made and the focus on it that I know exists in the district today, as well as additional investments, both in sort of curricular supports, as well as to, as I mentioned before, making sure we have sufficient staff to work with kids individually with particular issues and needs, or who are just having a trouble or problem in a certain day. I think we know from research that without sort of having social-emotional sort of stability, which includes, but isn't limited to really the ability to regulate yourself, especially as a young child, to focus on what is being said to you, it's hard to learn the critical academic skills. So I think social-emotional development is just as important as core academics. Thank you.
Andrea?
I think social and emotional is incredibly important, because if, as Amy says, if you don't have a child who's regulated, they can't learn. In terms of budgets, I actually think it's fairly cheap for what you get. It involves some curricular materials, it involves professional development, it involves, you know, psychologists, which I don't think we have enough of, guidance counselors. So in terms of people, the staff are the expensive things on the budget, in terms of people, it's actually not that expensive, and it creates an environment in which children can learn. So I'm fully supportive of the district's social and emotional curriculum and efforts.
Thank you, Andrea. Peter?
I think a lot of it has to do with awareness and making sure that there's trained staff and the right guidance counselors, so that, and open communication, so the students feel that they can go to these people and talk about their well-being, and if they have any social issues. So making sure that we have policies in place, so that the teachers understand how to recognize when a student has an emotional well-being issue or needs guidance, and making sure from the superintendent all the way down to the teachers, that everybody's following that and getting these kids, children, help when they need it.
Thank you, Peter. Does anyone want to rebut what another candidate said? Okay. Well, I will ask the next question. One of the biggest jobs of members of the school committee involves labor negotiations. In negotiating pay with Belmont's teachers' unions, how do you balance the need to make pay sufficiently high to attract and retain quality teachers with the tight budget constraints faced by Belmont? We'll start with Amy, sorry.
So, I'm, first of all, really eager to have the opportunity to hopefully collaborate with the Belmont Education Association. I think our district has a very sort of positive history in terms of being able to find common ground, even when, even when folks don't necessarily agree on every particular issue or challenge. I think, I think it's of the utmost importance that we invest adequately in our educators and our staff. Without that, our school system, you know, they are sort of at the core of what we rely on in order for our kids to learn throughout their career. I think it's important to sort of evaluate the range of, the range of supports we provide to teachers, and so one area to make sure to focus on, in addition to discussing compensation and salaries, is also the entire benefits package, as well as all of the other supports that we're providing to teachers.
Thank you, Amy. Andrea?
So, if I was in charge of education in this country, I would pay teachers like we pay doctors. Okay? I would completely change place, pay scale. But I'm not in charge, so that's not going to happen. And so the negotiations have to take, you know, the reality is, those negotiations have to take place in the context of a town that has a limited budget. Okay? So increases, but not massive increases. From my experience on the negotiating teams last year, it seemed like, you know, the teachers were sort of aware of this, and there were certainly other things that we could offer that were important to them, that was not necessarily just, you know, monetary compensation, like, for example, flexibility in taking personal days. So that kind of negotiation, I think we can make progress with, and that will help us, you know, attract the best teachers, and we do manage to attract the best teachers somehow. I mean, Belmont students do incredibly well with incredibly little.
Thank you, Andrea. Peter?
I think understanding what the competitive wages are from both a district and a national level is a good starting point, and making sure that we stay competitive and above that. And I think teachers like to work in an environment where they have peer groups that are very similar to their own skill set, and like to work in that environment, and come to Belmont for that reason. And I think that's the reason why we have a very high teacher background. I also think we should look to bring on more teachers with specialized skills, and look to see how we can get them into, like, the lab collaborative program is something that I think is an area where we don't have enough skilled or trained teachers, and with highly, we can look at the pay efficiency there and see if we can bring in the cost down with the budget, because a lot of out-of-district costs come from that. And we can look to bring down that money by saying, hey, if we hire these highly skilled teachers at this salary, and there's enough need for it, we can bring them in-house.
Thank you, Peter. Roger, next question.
There are a number of parents, and I believe even some educators, who, this is a high school-related question, a number of parents and even some educators, I believe, who believe that at Belmont High School, the students are under too much stress because of, through a combination of both classroom work and extracurricular activity, and trying to get into the best schools. Do you have an opinion about the presence or the absence of excessive stress at the high school, and what, if anything, a school system should do about it? Or is it a parent responsibility? That's the question.
So, are we switching off?
No, I'm sorry. You.
Okay. So, you know, I think this is a school, a family, and a community responsibility in terms of the culture that we set, both in the school, within the home, within the community. I think that, from what I know of the stress level in Belmont High School, I think it's an issue that we, I know many districts, especially districts similar to Belmont, face. I don't think it's unique to our community. I think that it's, it's important, I think, you know, the teachers have a role to play in this. I think school leadership, I think, again, as we talked about, the social-emotional sort of supports and mental health supports that we're providing to students, to have a chance to talk about their stress, and also, to the extent that we can reduce the amount of sort of direct competition over grades, or scores, or sort of rankings within the school, that might be helpful.
Thank you, Amy.
Sure.
Andrea?
So, yeah, there's a lot of stress at Belmont High School. I think Amy hit the nail on the head when she said that this is a community, and a school, and a family responsibility. You know, the expectations at Belmont High School are extremely high, and that's good. But we have to recognize that people, students have different learning styles, and, you know, not everybody wants or should be going to Ivy League schools. I hate to sound like a broken wheel, but I think that if we fix the start times, that will help a lot, because, you know, stress is made much, much worse by sleep deprivation. So, you know, if we can have kids coming into school with, you know, after a good night's sleep and a good, healthy breakfast, that'll help.
Thank you, Andrea. Peter?
Yes, so I think a lot of changes to the children's school environment, especially with the high school, has to be monitored, the social and emotional, you know, support, and what does that do to them with their, like we said, with the school start times changing, you know, having them, student athletes not being able to play on their home field, and having them to use a field. What does that do to them, and making them travel back and forth? You know, what does that do with their emotional well-being? What does that do with their stress? How does that affect their grades? These are all things I think we have to be aware of, you know, as these are going on. If we see that something is, from out of global levels happening at the high school, the teachers need to be aware, and we have to have some, you know, policies in place so that we can offer them the emotional support, and talk to families, and just communicate with them. If the families are saying that this has happened to multiple students, maybe we can have some small workshops with them, and talk to them, and explain to them, you know, how we're going to address these issues.
Does anyone want to rebut what another candidate said? We're all in agreement? Okay. I have the next question. The proposed ice rink to replace Belmont's current ice rink near the high school now appears that it cannot be placed at the old incinerator site. How do you balance the need for a new rink with the loss of athletic fields if the rink is placed at the high school? Does it make a difference if the loss of playing fields primarily involves fields for women's sports? Should Belmont pursue a public-private partnership, or should the town go it alone? So that's kind of a three- or four-part question. If you need me to repeat it, just let me know. Amy?
So, I'm supportive of us finding a way to build a new rink. I know this is something that's very important to many in our community. From the information I have so far, I think a public-private partnership would make sense financially to help support, we probably can't afford to do everything we want to, and so to the extent that we can partner, I think that would be helpful. I know a lot of important details need to be worked out, and the high school building committee is in conversations with the architects to explore sort of what the viable options are in terms of the exact spacing, and hopefully, we'll give this the time it deserves to explore all of the options and the pros and cons of each in terms of the actual space. I would certainly not support biasing decisions in terms of taking away things from women versus men. I think that was part of the question. I think it's important that we, that we evaluate the impact and that it be distributed, any negative impact be distributed equally.
Andrea?
So I'm overall in favor. I think the public-private partnership is a good idea. I am a bit concerned about loss of a playing field. I think one of the next steps we need to take is to get input from the athletic directors and the architects, and basically figure out, you know, which fields, which field might have to go, and, you know, how to, you know, minimize the impact over all of the sports that are played on site. I think that's it.
Thank you, Andrea. Peter?
I'm in favor for the public-private partnership. I think right now the taxpayers have a lot to deal with with a $295 million high school. We're going to ask way too much to try to privately fund this, fund this publicly. I think being able to get the right partner in here, I know that there's some partners that are going to use it for the right reasons. We don't want to generate a lot of traffic, or have it to, give it to a person, or a private partnership that's going to use it in a way that's going to disrupt our community. So I think if we negotiate, find the right partner, they're willing to fund the majority of it, and we can also look at the relationships with other towns to see if playing fields are going to be affected by all the sports, and where we can use their fields possibly, and look at some out-of-the-box, you know, options.
Does anyone want to rebut anything? No? Okay, Roger, you have the next question.
I'd like to bring the focus away from the high school and down to the lower grades. I believe there is an emerging concern in Belmont today about student safety, particularly at the, at the lower grades, and it's due to the immense number of cars at both pickup and drop-off. Do you believe that it is appropriate for the schools to encourage walking to school as an alternative to those, the use of cars? And what's the role of the schools, again, as opposed to a family, in promoting walking?
Yeah, I've experienced this traffic every day for the past, past six years, so I think this is definitely a big issue, and, I mean, traffic in general is a major stress, I think, in Belmont. So I, I think, to the extent that we can encourage families, and I think we do have some initiatives and sort of programs in place to do so, to walk to school, I think that has multiple benefits, one of which is decreasing, decreasing safety concerns in the amount of car traffic surrounding the school, and another which is sort of giving folks, especially young kids, a chance to be outside in the morning, and wake up and clear their head and go into school ready to learn. I think we live in a community where a lot of folks are able to walk, and I see many families walking every day. I know not every family is able to do that, and so I think we need to be conscious of families' specific needs and situations. But I know the walk-to-school days are very popular, and support more things like that.
Andrea?
So I want to encourage walking for, you know, any number of good reasons. I actually think that this is an issue that needs to be addressed in a larger scale than the school committee, you know, identifying routes, not just to schools, but to, you know, library, town center, that people take, and making sure that those routes are safe, that there are crossings at appropriate times, places. So, you know, whereas I think that the school administration needs to give input to that, but it is actually more of a town-wide thing, rather than just a school and a family-type thing.
Thank you, Andrea. Peter?
Yeah, I think we have to work with the town selectmen and with the school committee. I think a part of it is, you know, programs such as Waze has people cutting through Belmont and giving them, you know, access to, you know, our streets, and I have seen an uptick in cars coming through the town and causing speeding. So I know with bad weather and inclement weather, walking is not always an option, so looking at it from, you know, a year-long, we have to probably put some controls in place and look at which areas have the most traffic, and do maybe some studies to find out where the danger spots are, and where kids do the most crossing, and maybe communicate with them to cross, and maybe if we need cross guards or more cross paths installed, I would, I would be more in favor of doing a study first before, and getting data points where those areas are, and then make an appropriate policy with the students.
Any rebuttals? No? Everybody agrees? Okay. I get the next question, and since we were talking about traffic, I'll just continue with that. Because if bus fees are reduced, perhaps more students would take the bus to school. This could potentially reduce traffic. Do you think the school committee should work toward getting more students to take the bus by reducing the fees and promoting the bus more? We'll start with Amy.
I know that transportation and buses is a very complicated issue with a lot of, a lot of different variables working into it. I, again, think that for, for, I think that a lot of families already take advantage of the bus, and again, there are various reasons why some families choose not to. of the bus and, again, there are various reasons why some families choose not to, some of which may be financial certainly and some of which are sort of personal choice and what their schedule is at the beginning and the end of the day. I think I would, I would need to understand a bit more honestly, sort of like what the, what the options would be here to sort of assert my opinion, but I'm in favor of exploring ways to increase and encourage transportation. I just know that transportation is also very expensive and so we would need to evaluate additional cost to the district versus, you know, additional options for families.
Thank you, Amy. Andrea?
So I would love to encourage bus ridership and cut down on traffic, but the unfortunate reality is, is if we lower busing fees, then that money needs to come from somewhere and it will come from the school, from the school budget, okay? And, you know, I don't think that that is, at this point in time, a priority for me. So, love to.
Peter?
When you say bus, we're talking about public transportation or are we talking about busing for?
The school buses.
School buses.
Yes.
So I, I know, and if the student fees are going to go up, you're saying from the school bus?
Well, I'm saying, my, my kids actually take the bus. It's about $500 per, per kid.
Okay.
For the year.
So I would...
So I'm saying, you know, is there a way to reduce fees because maybe that's a lot for families and they don't want to pay it. So instead they're driving, which is adding to the traffic. So is there a way that, you know, if you became a school committee, would you try to lower those fees?
Gotcha. So I know we're looking to add a ninth bus this year and a lot of it has to do with school start times and there's only, the same buses are used for all the kids. So to answer, to answer the question, I would, I would have to look at, you know, where those fees are coming from, the budget and where we're taking in those fees from students. And, you know, if there's some revolving accounts, what's the general account from a financial, technical perspective that we can alleviate some of these and how many students are interested in this program and if we can get enough ridership and it makes fiduciary sense, I would definitely look to implement that.
Thank you, Peter. Oh, Andrea has a rebuttal.
I have rebuttal. So the addition of, of the bus, of a bus has nothing to do with start times. It has to do with more students. The, the later class start at the high school, it means that the first class starts at 8:05 a.m., the first teaching, but actually students who are coming on, using the bus will be coming at the earlier time. And that's one of the big disadvantages of doing it this way, which is that, you know, we enable 90-something percent of students who don't take the bus to get more sleep. But sadly, the kids who take the bus to the high school will not get more sleep unless with the extra half hour they can walk. So, no, so the extra bus has nothing to do with start times.
So do the start times from the high school, if they push it to 8:00 or 8:30, is that going to impact the Channery and the Wellington School with their start times?
Oh, if we, when we have, there are no plans to change start times any, any further until we get the new high school configuration going, okay? And then, you know, it's a whole new ballgame. Then we'll have an upper elementary school and they will probably need to be using buses a lot because they're going to be young kids, okay, and they're going to be coming from all over. So they're not going to be able to walk or, you know, get to school by themselves. So we'll have a completely new territory for buses when the new high school is open.
And the same buses are used for all of the schools, the middle school, the high school, they all use the same bus?
That, that's true right now. How we're going to do it in future, in, in the new high school, with the new high school, I just don't know.
So I'm just talking about the next year. So we, we use the same buses.
Yeah.
We're constrained by using the same buses. So looking at it from a budgetary standpoint, we're adding a ninth bus to solve a problem of student enrollment, but maybe we can look out of the box and say, you know, since we use all the same buses, how can we better, you know, maybe use the routes and, or maybe use the start times to make it more fiduciary sense and using those data points.
Amy, do you have anything to add?
I don't think so.
Andrea, you think you're done?
Bus times are complicated. I do not think that the administration has the bandwidth right now to do any complicated changing of bus schedules before the new high school.
So I guess my question, if I was on the school committee, it was something that I would look at those data points and maybe look at it in more detail and look if there's a way to, as the question was, to bring down the student fees, I would definitely look at it. It's, it's something that deserves attention and I would be, I would be the one that would do that if I was elected.
Good, good, healthy debate here, like that. Okay, Roger, next question.
I'd like to continue to talk about money.
Maybe talk.
Belmont has long resisted the idea of selling things like naming rights or advertising, you know, whether it be at the high school football field or the high school field house. Given that, or do you, two parts. Do you have an opinion about the sale of naming rights and advertising? And secondly, how would you, if at all, propose to raise non-tax revenue and non-fee revenue?
I don't have a, a strong preformed opinion about naming rights. Generally, I don't love the idea of, we were talking about product placement earlier of sort of having advertisements everywhere, but I think, I, I think I'm open to considering that option as a way to, as a creative way to bring more revenue into, into town. I think if elected, I am interested in exploring additional revenue opportunities for sure. And I know the town as a whole and the Board of Selectmen is also actively working on that issue. But I think in terms of continuing to seek out additional grants, we have a wonderfully supportive local foundation, but I think I bring a lot of connections at the state level, at the federal level and in terms of private funds for education that I'd be interested in looking into in terms of supporting initiatives in our district.
Andrea?
So I would be open to, you know, potentially having commercial partners come in and give us lots of money and then we name something after them. I, I'm a bit uneasy with, with the whole concept, but I think we, budget's tight so we have to at least be open to it. We have to have the usual kind of constraints, you know, no alcohol, tobacco, and then we have to have, you know, the ability to pull back, I think. I mean, you don't want to name something after a product and then you discover that the product is bad for people, you know, or something. Okay, then, then you want to be able to step back. So it really, it really does have its dangers. I don't think we're overwhelmed with offers, to be absolutely honest. And in fact, although this question keeps getting asked at every single, you know, event like this, I don't think we've ever actually had anybody come to us and offer us money. So, there you go.
Peter?
Yes, so the first part of the question, which was the naming rights, I, I do believe that it could be a good idea. If you have to look at the cost benefit and if it's with local businesses that fits with the community and, and what our community is about, I definitely think it's something we should entertain if it's going to generate more revenue. And I think if it's marketed the right way, we work with the town selectmen and it's something that generates local business revenue, which also generates tax revenue and, you know, it's a win-win for the community. I think it's the way we market it. I think we'll get, we can generate more interest and if I was elected, it's something that's in my alley that I can, I can definitely take that upon. The second part was non-tax revenue fee, how we generate more. So what I would look in, I was looking at the budget here in detail for the 2019. I do see we spent a lot of capital expenditure on the modular classrooms in the past because of student enrollment. And I think in the future, those assets, we should be looked at to possibly sell or possibly rent those out and that can also be revenue generating. So that's something, I know my time is up, as I would look into.
Does anybody have a rebuttal? No? Are there any audience questions? Do we know if there are any audience? Okay, so we have no questions from the audience. I think we have time for another question then. I'm going to ask that. Under Massachusetts laws, local school committee has very little substantive authority other than hiring the school superintendent and engaging in high-level planning. Explain what role, if any, you would want to have as a member of the school committee on issues involving the review of staff and curriculum. Amy?
Yeah, you know, I think these, these parameters and walls are in place for a reason in that the school committee is not involved in all of the day-to-day operations, although I know that sometimes they become involved in particular issues involving staffing decisions. But I, I don't think it's appropriate for us to sort of micromanage and that that's the superintendent and district administration's role to really review and evaluate the performance of staff unless there's a serious issue that arises that... I think, I think in terms of reviewing curricular options, I hope to sort of advocate for continuing to explore sort of innovative instructional strategies as well as curricular enhancements. I think we need to sort of keep up with the future of our society and constantly be reevaluating to the extent that we have control over it, what we're teaching students. So I would plan to suggest some ideas there.
Okay. Andrea?
So I don't think the school committee should be in the business of micromanaging teachers' evaluations. That's up to the superintendent and the principals. And the other part of the question?
What role? Explain what role, if any, you would want to have as a member on issues involving review of staff and curriculum.
Okay, so the curriculum, I have thoroughly enjoyed the curriculum subcommittee, but I think, again, that needs to be a very kind of top-level view of things and, you know, really, it's a lot of fun and I really enjoy learning about all the amazing things that Belmont teachers come up with. But really what we're looking at is to be sure that there isn't anything, you know, totally crazy in the curriculum like Flat Earth or creationism or, you know, things that are inappropriate like that. So, yeah, and again, another very, another very high-level approach. I don't think we should be, you know, getting into the weeds there.
All right. Thank you. Peter?
I would look at, I don't have the exact number, but I know a big part of the budget is the, the number of out-of-district students. And I think if we look at the teachers and the staff, I think there's an opportunity, not to micromanage, but to look at, do we have the proper staff? The new school and space, we're going to have space for a lab collaborative program in the new school. What type of students need this kind of help? Do we have the right staff to do this in-house? And what's the cost-benefit of sending a out-of-district student that we don't have, the, the type of staff to be able to give them the help that they need that, that causes us to have them go out of district? It's a huge cost to Belmont and the school system. And if I was elected, I would want to just sit down and do some more deep dive into that and figure out, is there something that we can alleviate the budget by doing it in-house? And can we use some of the space that we're going to be having available in the future in the new high school to accommodate that?
Any rebuttals?
Yes.
Yes, Andrea?
So in terms of out-of-district students, I, I agree that there may be some out-of-district students that we can serve in-house as we go forward. But the thing to remember about out-of-district students is that they have very uncommon needs. So if you take students who say are hard of hearing, we just do not have enough of them to be able to have a hard-of-hearing program in Belmont, okay? Certain kinds of autism, okay, there are many different kinds of autism. We do not have enough of those students. That's why there are collaboratives. So I don't see, yes, we have to pursue that option, but I don't see it as it, you know, that that's going to be a major cost saver.
Well, so I'm a data-driven person, so I want to qualify that and quantify it with numbers. So when you say we don't have enough, do you have numbers to support that? Because I'd like, I'd like to see, did we do our due diligence and actually do a cost-benefit and actually figure what that number is? Or are we just thinking that that's not available? If I was elected, I would find out what that number is. And if that number makes sense for us and we do have enough kids who are on the spectrum or have autism and it makes sense to bring somebody on staff from a cost-benefit perspective, then it, it's worth looking into that. But we can't just sit there and say, I don't think, or I'm not sure and it's probably not. We need, we need to be 100% positive for the taxpayers, for the children. We need to do the right thing.
Joanna, can I pop in here for a minute? Just to prevent this from being, from sounding like an insider conversation, can somebody take 15 seconds and explain to our listeners what you mean by an out-of-district student? Because I fear that that might be a term of art that you all understand and not everybody else knows.
So these are students who are, who have challenges that are sufficiently severe that they cannot be educated in a mainstream classroom. The regular IEP program won't work. They need to go to a specialist school.
Okay. Thank you.
And they cost far more.
I think, I don't know if we have time for another question or if we should move on to closing statements. I'm looking into our control room for a signal. One more question? Okay. I believe it's your turn, Roger.
There is a move amongst some parents today to have recycling increased at the Belmont Public Schools. I talked to a high school teacher recently who is now recycling crayons and the felt-tip pens, pens and things like that. What role does the school system have in promoting recycling? What role, if any? Let me...
I, I think this is a win-win and not a big sort of imposition on the school. I know there are lots of efforts in place across the schools. I think it's really important that, I think this goes to sort of both teaching our kids about the importance of conserving the environment and actually doing so. And I think that to the extent that we can encourage kids to learn about this at young ages, it will only help us, help us as a community and as a world later on. So I feel like the, you know, I think part of the, part of the school's, I wouldn't say responsibility, but role can be also sort of taking responsibility for our actions and understanding how we can help, help the world. So I'm very supportive of this.
I'm very supportive of it for all the reasons Amy gave. We need to teach our children to be, you know, responsible environmental citizens. And my only slight misgiving is if, you know, it's difficult to incorporate programs that actually take up a lot of teachers' time or, for example, you know, lengthen lunch breaks because you have to worry about all the different recycling options and make sure everything's done correctly. So, you know, so the, the daily, yeah. It has to work out. Otherwise you can end up taking too much time from staff.
Thank you. Peter?
I, I think this is a life-learning lesson and it goes beyond just the high school and/or, or the students in the school in general. I think it's worthwhile to teach the kids and to set up a policy from, you know, the superintendent all the way down to the teachers and let them know, show them what does recycling do, not just for them in the school, but for the world in general. Because when they leave, as, you know, they have, everybody has a, every resident has an obligation or a person has an obligation to help recycling. So I do think this is an opportunity, maybe not from a monetary cost perspective or tax, savings perspective, but from a life-learning perspective, that they should learn at a young age what recycling is because it's very important.
Okay. Does anybody have anything to add to that? Well, it's time for closing statements. Amy, start with you.
Is it one minute?
It is.
Okay, I'll go fast. So again, I've really, I'm really glad we've had this chance to sit together. I'm really excited about the opportunity to serve on the school committee. I think I could bring multiple lenses. I'm a parent, my kids are right in the middle of their school careers, I'm an involved community member and leader. I've spent a lot of time already volunteering in our schools and classrooms and I'm an education policy professional. I've worked with many districts across the state and have a firm grasp of what goes on within our district and, and what the different roles are that folks play. So I think this is a really big job. I encourage everybody to learn more about us and to vote regardless of who you're voting for and I'm really excited about the opportunity to take this on. So please check out my website at electamycheckaway.com to learn more about me and I'd be sincerely honored to have your vote on April 2nd. Thank you.
Andrea?
Well, in all honesty, I don't think you have any bad choices in this race. I think that Amy and Peter are both very thoughtful people who would make excellent school committee members. I respectfully suggest that experience is important. I've served on the finance, policy and the curriculum subcommittee members. There has been a lot of... There has been a lot of turnover on the school committee recently, and if I wasn't elected, then I think there would be five members out of six who were in their first term. So if experience is important to you, and if the school's budget and after-school care, which we didn't talk a lot about, if these are your priorities, then I respectfully ask for your vote on April 2nd.
Right. I have the same thoughts. This is a, anybody here running on this panel right now, it's a non-paying job. You do it for passion, and you can tell everybody here has a passion for this. I'm not, I'm not a politician. I'm not a school teacher. I have a very strong finance background, and I believe I can help. The next few years, there's going to be a lot of budget constraints, and the reason why I am going to go for school committee is because I want to donate my time and help the community. Even if I don't, I'll still, I'll still donate my time somewhere, somehow, and still help. So I, we're all doing this to help the community. I just feel I have the stronger financial and planning background, and I can bring that to the table and add value in, in that space in the school committee, which might not be that strong right now. So if you vote for me, you know, just like I do my professional job with my clients, your children and your taxpayers, just like me and you, I'll, I'll, you'll be like my first client, and I'll give the same passion as I do my professional job to you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for being part of this very healthy debate. I think it was important. I think it's important for voters to get to know who will be on the ballot April 2nd. I want to remind everyone to get out and vote, and thank you again for tuning in. Thank you Belmont Media Center for all you do to make this possible. Thank you, my, to my co-moderator Roger Colton and timekeeper Allison Colton, and all the volunteers tonight, including my own daughter, Annette.
Everybody have a good weekend.